Couple of things real quick. I'm a little unprepared tonight. I did not finish. I promised you guys I would document some of the concerns I have with police SOP. Have not got through with that yet, so maybe next meeting I thought I'd have it done another day. The other item is the employee handbook. Me and Judy and Debbie have sort of, last few weeks been working on a few ideas and things that we'd like to be part of the discussion next week at the workshop. And I will get that out to you guys tomorrow via email. Just a few things that we wanted to include in the conversation. The good news I've got is ACE is about to kick off. The ACE program is... On top there is a suggested list of participants for the program. What they strongly encourage is it be community oriented and not be something that comes from basically the local government and only politicians. They want a lot of involvement from the community. Our ACE team, they're from all over. The two captains are one's from the University of Alabama in Tuscaloosa and the other guys are community planner out of Nashville, Tennessee, and they've been assigned to us by the state. They have sort of set a goal for us of 100 participants. So when you look at these different areas, there's probably a lot of folks that come to mind, but the goal is to get 100 people to participate. And what they're participating in is this general assessment form, which is actually those first two pages. The numbering, you might go through it and think, there's no way you can get 20 pages worth of stuff. The numbering is not accurate on that, so it's actually closer to nine or 10. Fairly broad questions. It leaves a lot of room for discussion. Of course, hopefully we get involved. We'll want to leave a lot of comments. The more comments, the better. Last week I met with Tim and Sandy with the chamber and asked them to get on board with this. The amount of legwork it's going to take to get 100 of these filled out, actually not 194, six or seven right here. But to get 94 more folks involved is going to take a huge effort and it's going to take a lot of people pushing and prodding and working hard. I think tentatively, this is the first part of the program, these assessment form. They want these forms in by the 16th. Now, that's a pretty tight window. And they understand that, but they sort of dwell on deadlines and I sort of do too. So 16th is the date. If there's some a few after, I'm sure we can squeeze some in, some in there. I think Tim's going to have a link to this. So if you've got the physical form, you need to get it to somebody, you could direct them to the city's webpage and they can fill it out electronically and submit it that way. So don't have to, that's probably, that'd probably be a good thing to do for still and anybody that's really busy. Another thing they've asked me to do is to pick a local coordinator to handle this paperwork, to coordinate the effort and to be sort of a community liaison with the team out of Montgomery. They asked that it not be someone involved in the city government and preferably someone in the private sector that had some knowledge about how things work. The person I've chosen that is here tonight is named Jordan DeFexes. Jordan's agreed to help spearhead this project and do a lot of the legwork that some of us don't have the time to do.
Quick question there. Should there have been some input from the council on deciding a person at the work as liaison for the city? Or is this something that should just be the sole major responsibility?
Well, when the ACE folks come to me, they said, you know, when this thing gets going and when the ball gets rolling, one of the first things you're going to need to do is find someone that can help coordinate. They don't want the approach to be, they don't want local government involved. They don't want the approach to be a top-down forcible.
I understand that.
They want a groundswell of community support and they want a lot of different folks from different sectors.
The question was, should this be something that should be decided from the six of us because they represent via liaison the community, I mean, they represent Rainsville? Should that be something that all six of us should decide on? Or is that something that only you should decide on?
Well, I think Jordan's a good fit for this.
I'm not. I have no objection to Jordan. I'm just asking the question, how the decision gets made?
Yeah. They asked me to appoint a local coordinator and that's what I've done. You know, I feel like that we got accepted into this program through a lot of pleading and begging and...
How did we get accepted?
A lot of politicking at the design Alabama side.
So the initial paperwork was done by?
Well, the application was numbered by the city here.
Was it us that did it, this administration, or was it lobby done before?
It was done in this administration. It was a short turnaround.
By Carol Lee.
Carol Lee filled out the paperwork? Yes.
It just seems as though that we have had zero input on this right. And I haven't seen anything brought to the table. We haven't had anything discussed here.
Well, let's just get started.
Appointing a liaison is in phase two. Phase one is just going out and doing the community assessment and reporting back with a report card.
The first step is to appoint a local coordinator.
It says, "Phase two, leadership development and strategic planning," by which I got this off the website. During phase two, each community must establish a leadership development program, preparing up-to-date strategic plan and identify a local ACE coordinator. This local ACE coordinator will not only spearhead ACE efforts locally, but will also serve as a liaison between the ACE and the community. It just seems as though we got that one a little ahead of the program. We're still in phase one of the assessment.
Councilwoman, I'll be happy to show you the emails where I was instructed to appoint a local coordinator.
If you'd please forward them to me, I appreciate it.
I'll be happy to do that. Be happy to. Another, throwing a lot at y'all, is there any questions about the assessment form? Is it about some of the questions? I know you wouldn't have time to read through them right now, but...
So we just need to get people to go online or hand in a copy and fill it out? People that we know?
Well, anybody, actually. Yeah. They did mention, they said, you know, some people outside of Rainsville probably could contribute a little bit, just because the impact of this program is going to stretch outside of Rainsville. And so, yeah, if there's key people outside that want to contribute, I think that's definitely a good thing.
Well, if we need...
This is only just suggested. You know, it's just a good way to get started with the types of folks that their input would be, you know, valuable for the program. But, I mean, really, really anyone. It doesn't mention, I don't think it mentions college students, high school students, but I think that's applicable as well. That would be a good addition.
If we need 94 more, can we just maybe split it up, that each of us are responsible for extra amount so that we can kind of get it done more efficiently?
I think that's a good idea. Tim's, have you got it on the website yet, Tim?
Well, the only thing I did this afternoon, I did an email to some business people and to y'all, just about an hour ago.
Yeah, I'm talking about the static form on...
I haven't yet, but they did add that name box. I noticed, I'll check that. So the name box is added. Did you find out who it goes to? Got one of those two guys you were talking about?
He called me today and I forgot that.
They did update that, add the name of the survey taker, so...
Okay.
That's...
Yeah, that's...
Figured I'll just put it on, I'll just do ringswell.com/ace slash ace and W'll be easy for everybody to tell people where to go. I didn't know if we wanted it on the public, just for anybody in the world to see it. We might just want to keep it somewhere where we can refer people to it. I don't know. Jordan, thanks.
It's just a lot, it's a lot to get done. Maybe Tamey can...
Cindy was going to go, she's going to take some in person tomorrow. She's going to visit some, so I figured she could probably come up with 30, 40, 50 maybe during that.
Right.
Well, 94 split up between six. If we take the entire lot, it's just 15, 16 people a person. So I don't see it being a problem, as long as...
As long as everybody, as long as we know, everybody knows who we're contacting. Because it's a small window to get it done and I hate to get past the deadline and somebody get left out and say, "Well, I would have done that if I'd been there." So to speak.
What's the deadline? Do we have the deadline?
16.
13. Yeah, I chose to stay.
Also, the other thing is the captain of our ACE team, he's a local blankenship. He works for the University of Alabama. Called me today about a potential grant opportunity through the Appalachian Regional Commission. It's basically, it's a 70-30 deal. Total cost is $30,000, $35,000 for the whole project. If we applied and were accepted, we'd be responsible for the 30%. What it is for is for a comprehensive plan for the city. He sent me a sample of Sumter County that has went through the same process. I would have brought a copy, but it would have been very thick. I'll email it to you. It was very detailed. Basically, by virtue of being in the ACE program, it makes us eligible for this process. He wanted me to, he wanted me to mention it tonight and tell you a little bit of the detail about it. Probably should have emailed that to you this afternoon, but I didn't, isn't, I mean, is that, have any of you ever sent a comprehensive community plan? As far as, in your packet, in your packet is this two-sheet form. Basically, it's like a rough draft. It's a skeleton of what one of the plans would look like. Covers different areas, city services, public-private things. Basically, it's like a report card. It's a profile. It better helps identify economic strengths, economic weaknesses, things that are going well, things that maybe there's a deficit as far as trying to make the economy more robust. To my knowledge, this is something that Rainsville's never went through. Is that right? Is that something you guys would be interested in pursuing or... Don't have to have a definitive answer tonight. Just, he wanted us to be thinking about it, not currently out here. Any thoughts?
Is this crack for like a hundred thousand or what amount?
No. Total cost would be that 35, 30 to 35,000. And it's a 30% match. He said there was, there would be some wiggle room as far as manipulating in-time contributions and things like that, where we would, you know, might could get it under 10,000 or so total.
That's just to help compile all of this and figure out what our strengths and weaknesses are as far as the town or the city?
Yeah. It's sort of like, the way he explained it, sort of, it's in coordination with the ACE program, but it's more of a micro-type study, whereas ACE is more of a general study that's on a broader range and that is continuous. A comprehensive plan would be sort of a, it would be more specific. It would be more of a snapshot and type thing. That's the way he explained that to me. This is, it's basically the first opportunity. They talk about when you get accepted into ACE, the advantage is that you become eligible for projects and grant opportunities out of that. And this is the first opportunity by being in that program. All again, Joey?
Well, pass around the sewer report for everybody to read. I won't bore y'all with those details unless y'all might want to.
We're good.
We'll point out one good thing, and it's something on the very back page I am very pleased to report. We have passed four consecutive quarterly mercury tests. We are now going to petition ADAM to change our testing from quarterly testing to annual testing. And if we are approved, this will give us a net savings of about $1,600 a year just in testing. So I'd like to thank Alan for the good work he did there and keep up the good work, sir. Let's see here. I'd like to also make an announcement for the Heritage Committee. We are now formally established in the basement of the library. Tell Ms. Sarah we said thank you.
Are y'all paying rent on that?
We are. Now, I'm not going to tell you what the terms of the rent is. But we are paying rent. And we would like to put the word out that we are now accepting any type of donations as far as old photographs, old stories, old maps, anything, old documents, anything pertaining to the history of Rainsville. You can drop them off at the Rainsville Library and they will be forwarded to the basement. They'll be taken good care of too. And so we've got that going and hopefully we'll see the fruits of that labor here soon. And then just one other thing, and this really doesn't have anything to do with Rainsville and I may get my hand slapped or bring it up. The Hennecker Drive-In, they're facing a, being shut down at the end of 2013 when there's no more 35-millimeter films. They're going to have to change their projector out to a digital projector to stay in business. And Honda is doing a project where I believe it's five to 10 different drive-in theaters will get a digital camera. If anybody's wanting to help out the Hennecker Drive-In with this, please go to this website. It's projectdrivein.com. You can cast one vote per day there. And I would love to see that place stay in business. And the last good news is we have nothing to spend money on at the Sewer Department, so that's all I have for today.
Thanks.
First of all, we got a letter from the Rita Marshall principal, plenty of you thanking the police department, the youth today, and the city for their donations to the students in Plankhurst, those that have or in need. I think the donation was $4,000 to help the students with their difficulties throughout the year. So again, we thank Chief Sanders and the team for working on that. The new vehicle will be here shortly. All strapped up, if they have finished it today. Outside them. So be sure and stop by and look at that. If I'm not mistaken, we are going, instead of putting used computers and radar and those kinds of things, we're going to put new stuff. And that has been donated by Senator McGill and Representative Gris...
Grant.
Grant. So we want to, that bill will be coming, put that as well and taken care of. The other thing, I was approached by, was someone from the school board about the Coliseum. Is there any update on the Coliseum about signing documents or owing money or...
Yeah, it's an ongoing discussion. Probably something that needs to be handled in an executive session.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, listen.
Okay. We are kind of going to accept the bid, but Tom Bevel paving. I'm very excited about this. This is a long time coming. I don't know if I've been doing this before, my friend.
Six years.
Okay. We are accepting, do I do this a certain way? We just need to accept the... Okay. And then I'll do it, yeah. I'll do it during the meeting, but we are accepting Whittaker contracting and their bid was $72,488. So we will be accepting that. And I want to thank Mr. Phillips for all his help and patience with that. And he's been meeting with all of us, getting all that straightened out, so I'm excited to get that started. And of course, that is coming out of the state money that we got in order to revamp city buildings and all that jazz. And so, right now, I got a total from Ms. Debbie and that's at 102. So it's 102 and then that'll be 72. And we were expecting the bid to come around 89. So that's quite a bit lower that we were able to get the paving for. So we went ahead and bought a quote for painting the entire inside of the Tom Bevel Center. And I didn't know at that time how much the paving would be, so we got different scenarios of the paint, but everything inside will be about $7,600. But I want the main areas painted. That would be auditorium, the kitchen, the bathrooms, the hallways, the Bowman Room. And I think we'll add the one office because the Chamber of Commerce office was painted recently. It was like, what, not even six months ago? Maybe six months ago?
April.
Yeah, so not even six months ago, so there's no need to paint that one. So the total we're looking at there is about $5,300. So I'd like to go ahead and do all that. You know, over the years, the Tom Bevel Center has somewhat taken a backseat to updating everything and we would like to next year raise the price of rental again, but still be lower than everybody in the surrounding area so that we can at least try to start breaking even. So with these renovations, you know, we would be able to. And then what we're going to do is Ashley Thomas and myself are going to go out junking and we're going to find good mirrors and update the decor a little bit because the decor in there is a little outdated, so that will be hardly anything that we're spending. And then we're going to have a workday. The board members are going to have a workday and then kind of do the final touches. So I'm excited about the Tom Bevel Center getting updated. So I'm going to be passing the paving. Does anybody have questions or concerns on the painting?
It's going to be the $5,300 you said, Senator?
And what we're doing is it's going to be like, almost off that color. It's, we're just doing all tan everywhere and then white trim, so it looks neat and all that jazz. Before we can do the paving, we need to decide on the sign. And the first sign that, Dawkins has actually been helping me with this. This is the one. Sorry. And here is the other one. There is quite a price difference that I'm going to try to make my case and then we can hash it out and vote on it and do whatever the majority feels like is best. This is just the regular sign, if you want to pass that around. The first sign that Dawkins got for me was the sign my first bet will. And that, of course, can, you know, you can enter in the words or what have you, announcements. While I believe that we should go with the more expensive sign is number one, I took both of these signs to the board and the board recommended that sign, the more expensive sign. And what we would like to do is, in a way to start recouping, I mean, it will be a long haul, but is we could, people that have events there, we could charge for them to announce their events on there. I mean, not much, charge by letter to say happy anniversary to whoever, happy birthday to whoever, just as an effort to try to get some funding for it a little bit. Because the paving came in so much less, and here's a specific example. The pavement came in at around $17,000 below what we had budgeted and expected. And this sign cost just under $15. I guess my little push I'm going to say here is the Tom Bevel Center has, again, taken a backseat a lot of the times. Once we are done with the paving, with the paint, and the board has a workday, we're going to work on the landscaping, get in there. And the Tom Bevel Center will be good for a good while and it will be in good shape. I think it will look good in Rainsville. But I do know that's a $15,000 sign. The other sign is quite a bit less, it's $5,000 and it's just, you know, a regular sign, which I'm sure that will look fine as well. And I've talked to some of you and everybody seems to be somewhat on board, but I just wanted to address that and talk about the sign and feedback on that. But the reason why we have to decide on the sign before we move forward with the paving, and this is something that I did not think of, but Roger did, is we'll have to lay the groundwork for it, pretty much, like get the wiring and you said a whole bunch of words on that telecon call that I don't understand, so I just let you say it.
That just answered my question. It's like, I think we're going to have to hook someone to a computer.
That's what I was...
Before any paving gets done and...
Anything we need to get across the parking lot before the paving gets done, we need to get that done and it needs to settle back in and everything will be okay. Is that about the same?
I mean, Dawkins and them have worked real hard on pulling up Bradford years. We have ideas with the garden club and the beautification board on what kind of landscaping needs to take place, but, I mean, I just have not touched landscaping because the paving has been a priority to me. And so once we get all of that straightened out, then we can work on the landscaping in that square way. So what are y'all's thoughts? This is not coming out of the general fund. It's also not depleting the state money. There was always state money once, you know, the Tom Bevel's done with. I just kind of feel like this is catching the Tom Bevel Center up.
Is this sign similar to the one in front of the sewers?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think it has to everything running the parking lot. The way he told me, he looked at the wiring out there already and he said everything was there. He's going to have to put a bigger post in, in basically the same. We can move it. If we don't want it where it's at, we can move it a little bit while we're doing it.
Are there really, are there really a lot of announcements that we can put on later?
Well, we have a lot of city events and then...
Well, speaking of that, could we use that for our own...
Yeah, I mean, that would be a lot for it, you know, with all the city events that go on or RTI's moving in the park or farmers, you know, doing stuff and Mountain Annual Meeting, Farmers Annual Meeting. I mean, there's always...
I mean, I think a new sign would be great, but that's a pretty big price difference.
It is.
Do y'all use your message board at Farmers Line?
The true answer is no, because it's really not working right now.
But now, it's a different...
It's not a watch fire, is it?
I'm sorry?
It's not a watch fire.
Ours, no, ours is an old, old one.
I talked to the car, some guy back months ago, I guess when the dialogue first started. And... I, I talked to the car, some guy back months ago, I guess when the dialogue first started and, uh, he says, to his knowledge, there's not a lot of problems with, um, like there is with the, you guys have.
Uh, also that one is LED, so it would be less electrical use on your reoccurring monthly cost. There is a benefit of that compared to the one that we have at FTC.
Is, is Farmer's gonna get their specs?
We're looking at possibly going in a different direction. So more like sand mountain electric has in their signage out front, something just a little more simple.
And give us the not needed.
I just asked a world, a lot of little sign boards around, I, I mean, I think, I don't think the announcements are a problem. I do realize that this is not a cheap sign, but really nothing's cheap anymore. I mean, to get good quality and the way the Tom Bevel Center is kind of taking the backseat, I just think it would complete it. Not that I'm saying this won't look good.
The other sign would look, would look really nice though, as well.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they're basically the same except for the LED part.
Fine.
Yeah.
Could this possibly give any more exposure to the AgriCenter and advertising events there going on at the AgriCenter?
I mean, the city buildings, we will work, you know, we'll cross over and help each other.
Can you just get the seven, five thirty-five click if you use the vote?
Well.
If you've already got, if you've got one of the Coliseum, First Bank South, First Southern, Farmer's Leated, Ag Center, you did this one, that's gonna put you at five. Five in town.
Well, I guess my thing is I took it in front of the board and the board recommended this one, so I'm gonna support the board and ask that we vote for the higher priced one. Um, if the majority is objecting, then I will vote with the smaller amount. Cause it, I mean, I don't think a sign is a reason to get our fingers in a titty, so I will, I, that's why I wanted to just, you know, put it out on the table and everybody talk about it. So what is everybody's thoughts? Cause I'm bringing up whichever is the majority in the meeting, so.
I, I think the small one would be sufficient, that's, that's just the way I feel. I think the big one.
Y'all two are the ones that are sitting looking at this.
Uh, well, I was kinda hoping David would vote for the big one so I could vote for the small one, then I could tell they might have voted for it. But, uh, I, my, my natural leaning right now is to, is to the lower price, but I, I, I've been told by my wife and my kids that I'm cheap. A, 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 and they may be correct. But I do see the benefit and, and we're, what we're talking about is price difference of about ten thousand dollars.
Now, and keep in mind that of the paving on how much we're studying.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I, I've got that squarely in mind and, and, and there's benefits and attractions both ways.
Well, Melissa and I had this discussion and I was leaning more toward the sign without. However, I will say that in personal experience and being the one at Broadway at the church, I was involved in that so. And at that time, I wanted the bigger sign and wanted to vote on the smaller one, and I've recreated it ever since, not really just fighting for the bigger one. So I would probably lean more toward the bigger one just because it's a, it's bigger, you, more, more things we can do with it and I, I felt, you know, I, I just think we need to take the, if I was buying a car in Conforta, either one of them would announce a bidding for it, maybe that's the way, the way we're kinda doing it.
What about like parts and maintenance, does David have a look up with that? Long. Maybe somebody out of town.
Yeah, David, it's kinda, it's kinda, it's either a five or ten year warranty.
It's got, it's said in a paper file.
Five, yeah, and then he, he said that he's never had any problems with it once it's put up. And I also had Thomas signs giving the, they came and looked at the sign, sign bill, and I did have that, but he was just way younger than him, it's the same, same exactly.
What's the price on the big one?
Fourteen nine ninety-five.
Is that with tax?
That's total, correct?
Total.
That's, that's total.
So it's not gonna say his name, thousand, threshold?
He was, he was able to do that, we told him, he, he said if we would hit him like set the post with a backhoe, that he could stay under that, so.
I don't see that being a problem.
So we go on the big one? Thanks, guys. The board thinks you too, Mr. Joe is probably out of town, he meant to come also. Okay, that's that. Um, I had employee handbook undermined just to say that please make sure you read over the draft and print it off and be well familiar with it. I realize that I drafted this back in December, probably, um, and comments were sent out probably four or five months after. Um, so it would, I think the meeting would flow better and more efficient if everybody comes with their comments and thoughts in mind instead of us reading page by page and not being familiar with it. Um, so and also you're gonna send that out so we're aware of what you guys are talking about as well. Um, okay, the fire department grant, let me guess my email has been printed off. Um, this is a federal grant that Thomas, um, Ridgeway approached me about. And essentially what it is, it's two different categories and Thomas couldn't make it to this meeting, so I'm gonna give you a summary of it. Is what they want is for you to apply to get towards fire code as much as possible. So that is up to six firemen for Rainsville. So we could get less, we could get three, you know, whatever. Um, so we would apply for all six, it's a thousand dollars to actually, you know, apply for the grant and then once it is finished, it would be, the cost to us would be five thousand per grant that we get. That's assuming we get both grants, we may not get both grants, so if we just get one, it's just five grand, if we get two, it's ten grand, totally in eleven. And what it would call for is we would get, um, six paid firefighters and that is training, any kind of equipment, I mean, the city would not be out a penny for any of these six firemen for two years. So we would essentially, the federal government would pay for six employees at no cost to us. Um, what they want is at the end of the two years for cities to pick up some, if not all, we're not gonna be able to pick up six firemen. So what I would like to do is when we're talking about this employee handbook, that's something to keep in mind also is when, if we get, say we get three firemen, when we hire those three firemen, they need to sign off on something stating that they are aware this is a grant position. In two years, this position may not be here, it may be here, but for them to go ahead and plan on this as a two-year grant. Um, they pay for employee benefits, employee taxes, and, um, that would be two years. Let me see if I'm missing anything else. Um, what Thomas's plan is if we get all six, we hire three new firefighters full-time and then elevate three of our part-time firefighters to full-time position. So then we would save any of the part-time position money, um, employee pay, employee benefits, and then we would also save on overtime because if, I mean, at that point you have non-firefighters, there's no reason we would have vacation, overtime, anything like that. So, I mean, that would essentially pay for it and then some. So I think this is pretty much free money and it's a good thing. I'm trying to see if I'm forgetting anything, that's the gist of what I remember. I think that's it.
Who's gonna write this application?
Atass.
Childersburg.
Um, is that the one that Thomas works on a lot? Yes, yes. You guys see this, so, um, we'll just have, wait and see what happens. But I think it's a good thing. Um, okay. Uh, I'm not talking about that at this meeting, that's not much I wish to, I didn't prepare for that. And the library's annual yard sale, everybody write it down, is September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth from eight AM until probably, I don't know, close of the business day, twelve o'clock. If anybody has not junk, but donated items, not huge items either, and would like to donate that to the library for them, so sell, um, please contact Sarah. This is how we raise money for our reading programs, for, you know, books we need. The library does not take a lot out of the city, we get our own grants, we raise our own money, we get donations, so, um, this is a really good fundraiser that the library does. Um, I'm not addressing the last one either, okay, I'm done. I think that's it.
Okay, right.
I was talking with Sam earlier, he said we got all the results and everything in the paving is scheduled, can't finish, starts September sixteenth for everything that we passed and done for all that. And I've got something coming up that I just wanna kinda talk to y'all a little bit about as far as the outcome and as far as our budget meeting. To set aside, me and Ricky's been talking a lot about this and actually looking at the city to be able to purchase its own side cutter. Basically, you can see it's any streets that you run down, the overbrush, it's in there. If we are lucky enough to get the county here, you know, you're looking roughly a hundred, a hundred twenty bucks an hour for them to do it. They come and work, I think it was on every, was it every? Yeah. Every so one is like. Only one they could come up here and do, that, this is the first time in maybe two to three years that we've even got them to come up here. I just wanted to look at something like that as far as looking to maintain ourselves and I wanted to kinda look at our budget to set something, maybe like fifty thousand dollars aside, but we've actually found two that's more like thirty. That's supposed to be real good equipment that we can go look at next week, but I just wanted to kinda catch y'all's input on something, if y'all think that would be beneficial. I mean, we do, I mean, cause if any backstreets or anything that you drive down, we'll.
I went down, it was amazing when they clean, clean the sides, I wasn't expecting it.
And if we've got something, if we've got our own.
We looked into one, uh, two or three years ago and the only ones we could find at that time was like, they, they were real good ones from, I think it's from the state, that's like sixty thousand dollars or something like that. They were real expensive and we didn't, didn't wanna buy them, but that's a pretty good value on that one.
And there, I think there's both John Deere's, one of the, I talked about one of them.
They're both John Deere, one of the drives, like the state's got.
Yeah, so we just kinda.
He said the upper thirties, he wasn't sure exactly, would be in the upper thirties.
But we wanted to kinda say that fifteen in case that wasn't what we wanted, but just something for y'all to think about before we do that next week, cause I just think that'd be a big asset to the company.
Yeah, big addition.
Yeah.
You know?
That's all I've got.
Uh, the only thing I've got is, uh, our community events committee met, uh, August the twenty-seventh, we discussed a, a wide range of different events to, to talk about, you know, and, and, uh, went over a lot of stuff. One of the main ones that we're kinda focusing on now is, uh, for this, for this late in the year is the Christmas parade, doing something kind of special for it. And so we're, we're working on it, we're gonna, we're gonna meet again, uh, September the twelfth and I should have something out of that meeting that would, that I can pass along to you about, about what we're gonna do and what, what kinda events we're gonna have, or what are we gonna change about, maybe what we change or try to do to make it, you know, Christmas parade more different. Uh, that's the only thing I have, except, uh, we need to go into executive session to discuss some ongoing litigation. That's all.
Anybody have anything else? Take about a ten minute break.
I'm sure he would, put in the back.
You don't have a, a layup pitch to it?
This was at a balcony. You're warming her up before the balcony.
Oh. Present.
Paul, here, Ledbetter?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Langerfeld?
Here.
Judy, if you will, read over the last one.
Okay, this is, uh, this is my regular council meeting, August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Um, Mayor Jones called the meeting to order all the row, the clerk presented and read the minutes from the August the fifth, two thousand thirteen regular council meeting. Mayor Jones wanted to clarify that in item number eight, only a portion of Hush Street was added to the paving project. With this correction noted, motion was made by Graham and Segba, they made her to approve the minutes. Uh, motion carried with all in favor. A motion was made to pay monthly bills as presented by the city treasurer, motion carried and all in favor. At six oh seven PM, a motion was made to go into executive session to discuss the good name and character of the employee and to discuss ending litigation with the city attorney. Motion carried unanimously. At six fifty, uh, PM by reporter of the mayor, a motion was made to return to regular session with no action taken. Motion carried unanimously. A motion was made to adjourn at six fifty-one, motion carried with all in favor.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
And second it. A motion by Graham to accept the minutes as, as read by the clerk, seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Motion carries. Uh, one quick thing, um, the ARC grant application for comprehensive plan, uh, there is a pre-application phase. Um, so if, if you guys think it's something we might be interested in, we can, we can go in that direction. If we get into it before the actual application's filed, we can say no, we're not at this time and, and we're out, out no money. Uh, is that something? You guys will be okay with moving forward with it.
Is that the grant seventy-thirty thing you were mentioning?
Yes, comprehensive plan.
What all, does that money specifically go for?
Planning.
Just the planning?
Uh, yeah, and I, and I can, I can email you guys, um, that Suntre County comprehensive plan, it's very, uh, lengthy, a lot of details in it, but.
What, what's the timeframe on this, uh, grant application, is there any hard deadlines that we have to meet?
Uh, good, very good question. Uh, he did not give me a deadline, he, uh, he wanted me to talk to you guys tonight about, about it and, uh, he didn't, he did not mention when the actual application, uh, date is, so I'm guessing probably a, you know, minimal three, four weeks or so, uh, possibly more.
And this is like the first step in ACE that we are gonna qualify for grants and things?
But that, this, this is not, this won't be through ACE, this will be through the Appalachian Regional Commission. Um, it's just a sort of a byproduct of being in ACE, it's just an opportunity that, that comes up, um, by virtue of being in the ACE program.
Is, is this gonna be something very similar to what we went through with the Design Alabama, the roundtable meeting?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, it won't be a, it will not be a conference, uh, that you go to.
How much money are we talking?
Sixty-five million.
Yeah, probably closer to ten thousand in this.
Pro, yeah, probably how, how much?
Thirty percent, thirty percent.
Nine to ten.
For the total amount?
For our match.
For the, for the match.
Okay, so that one more time, so I'm clear on it, our match would be anywhere from six to ten thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. Total project is, it'll be thirty to thirty-five in calls.
Can we think about it and make it a systematic?
Yeah, if y'all wanna think about it, I can, in the morning, I can email you guys Suntre County that.
I was, I was about to ask for this, cause I was like, see, it's hard to vote on something when, I, I still have a few question marks as to what the actual product is, but.
I understand.
And, and, you know, I understand it's just the pre-phase, there is nothing binding. Um, I would just hate to waste someone's time if it's something that we decided that we don't wanna go through.
Well, he, he mentioned that, uh, having been in, or having, he does this for a living and, uh, since Rainsville got accepted in the ACE program, uh, he said Rainsville is a, a prime candidate, uh, for a lot of different reasons, one being in ACE, uh, two, having never done it before, having never, uh, participated in a comprehensive plan. But yeah, that, that's, that's fine, I'll send you guys the, the one hand to look over. Alright, Joey?
Uh, well, since I have nothing to spend money on.
Uh, well, since I have nothing to spend money on this week, I have nothing for the meeting. I probably should have phrased that in a better way. We have nothing to spend on, you have to leave for the sewer port.
David?
I have nothing to add.
Melissa?
Okay. Mr. D, do I have this, this, this is a normal, this is a special. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the lowest bid for our Tombevel paving center, um, parking lot paving in the amount of seventy-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars from Whittaker contracting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter to accept the paving contract with Whittaker to pay the Tombevel and Ridgway Center parking lot. Seconded by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the quote from Ivan Harville Painting, um, in the amount of fifty-three forty for the painting of the interior of the Tombevel Center.
I'll second you.
Motion by Ledbetter to accept Ivan Harville's bid fifty-three forty for painting of the Tombevel Ridge Center. Seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I vote aye, I'm sorry, Councilman Holt was distracting me.
Sorry.
Okay, um, and then I make a motion for us to accept the, um, for us to purchase the larger, um, scrolling sign from Park City in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. And all of this money will be coming out of the state, um-
How much was that?
Money that we are given, fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second it too.
I, I, I have one question that I, I meant to bring from the workshop, yeah. Just the last week, I've been reading through our, our sign ordinance. This is in compliance with the sign ordinance, right? We know that?
It should be, because, uh, this is a sign that's for that business. It's not like a billboard or something like that too. We, we might need to check on the, on the, on the square inches and all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, that might need to be checked.
So, I'll put a stipulation in.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to buy the crier sign of the larger one that scrolls for fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five if it meets the ordinance specs for the city of Ransville. If not, we will be purchasing the second, smaller sign.
Since she amended that, I will second it.
Uh, motion by Ledbetter to accept the bid from crier sign, fourteen thousand nine ninety-five for sign outside the Bevel Center if it falls within the sign ordinance. If not, the other one will be purchased. Seconded by Langerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
I, and I, I don't know. Motion carries. Yeah, motion carries.
Um, and then two things that we forgot to not mention is, you know, the city of Ransville website looks awesome. And for those of you that haven't been to it lately, I mean, it has, are you the one that updates the city of Ransville website? Yeah, it looks really, really good. There's been a lot done to it over several months. Every time I check it, there's something new and different, so, um, good job on that. And then also, do you wanna kinda give us a little summary of the golf tournament?
Golf tournament went really well, um, we exceeded our goal, thanks to a lot of the support from the community, basically, support of the city, um, support of the golf course, most of the players. Went really well, we exceeded our goal.
How did you shoot?
Oh, I didn't play, I, I was just a witness.
He's made it before.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the chamber did a really good job on putting all of that together. They had a lot of door processes and all of that just laid out. Um, and then, does anybody, do I need to make a motion to do this grant for the fire department? Do I? Okay, so-
If you don't apply for the grant.
I make a motion that we move forward with applying for the fire department grant to get up to six free employees with all costs paid.
I'll say it again.
Motion by Ledbetter to apply for a grant for the fire department to reimburse the city for up to six employees. Seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Uh, I think I'm done. Do I need to do it again?
Yeah, uh, I did that next instead of yours. Oh, I'm just happy.
Oh, did you?
I did.
Oh, okay. I'm good. I'm done.
Right.
Don't have anything.
Okay.
Uh, one thing that I was, I, I, I forgot to mention is, uh, of course, the ball fields is, uh, shut down for, except for just a little bit of practice time. People's still practicing a little bit for some stuff. But other than that, it's pretty well shut down. Everything went real good this year, real pleased with the turnout at, at all the ball games and all that kinda stuff. Uh, the other thing is the pool, the pool went real well this year, didn't have, uh, had a little bit of problem with a few leaks and stuff, but we're fixing to, uh, go ahead and winterize it, get it ready for next year. Uh, may wanna spend a little money and find the leaks, uh, between now and then, but, but we're, we're well shutting it down too. So, everything's done with all that. Uh, of course, I talked about the community events, uh, the only thing I have left is, uh, going into executive session. Uh, before we do that, uh, I'll make a motion that we pay the monthly bills, get that out of the way.
I second that.
Motion by Langerfeld to pay the monthly bills, seconded by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other business?
I'm not the one who's going to executive session.
I'll second you.
Motion by Langerfeld to go into executive session to discuss ongoing litigation, seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.